Good evening, everybody. I want to thank you for coming tonight. I'll see you when we get started. Where? Yeah. Can you hurry? Yeah. I want to understand this is going to be live. Ready to go? Okay. If you didn't sign in, I wish you would sign in. I appreciate it. I'm going to talk for a few minutes and then we will get us some questions and hopefully some answers and maybe the answer for the next question. But before we get started, if you don't mind, I'd like to open a word of prayer. When you talk, I may all bring to open some prayers. John Paul, we thank you so much for this day that you're giving us. I thank you so much for each and every person here today. Just pray that you'll just pour down special blessings upon the families represented here today. Thank you for Vernon and what he does for the county. Thank you for this meeting. Just pray that you'll just open our hearts and open our minds to listen and be able to ask good questions and just let us know what's going on inside of our great county. I thank you so much for all the citizens that work hard to make this a better place to work, play, and live each and every day. Well, thank you for your love. In your son's name, Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen. Chris, you know, need us in...
Not me.
This is everybody we got to help.
Yes. It works.
Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we want to be here all night, so we'll try to get it going. Say good thanks and get into some questions. I like, I want to open up this by saying, you know, it's been almost three years, I guess, that I've been in office now. A lot of people always ask me why I decided to run. And the biggest reason I decided to run was because of St. Corinthians Level Four, I think it is, where it says that if my people will humbly bow and pray, we will not kill the nation. You've got like thousands and millions of Christians praying that prayer all across the U.S. and I didn't see, to me, like God was actually working trying to, you know, heal the nation. And so I just asked him, you know, I said, "God, why? Why? I don't understand. I don't see you actually working. What's going on?" And really quickly, he responded back to me and he said, "Well, you know what? You want me to heal your nation, but you're not even going to have your own backyard." Unfortunately, I think I had to run at that point in time. And the way he works, thank goodness he is talking to my wife at the same time, so she knew it too. So I'm very thankful for that. I'm very humbled to be here. I'm very humbled to run. I don't do a good job. Took my own horn. People tell me all the time, "Hey, you need to say more about yourself and what you've done." It's hard for me to do. I just don't care much for that. All right, y'all, if you don't mind, please sign in and have a seat. So when I first got elected, I noticed that Hyrum was actually trying to put sewer in. And I got very involved in that and tried to help any way I could because I knew how vital the sewer was. And for that time, Hyrum had sewer. I thought that would be great, mentioned bring business in. Hyrum does now have sewer downtown. I think it is going to change. I think, and mentioned in the future, we will see things happen in Hyrum. I have met with one investor and he was really impressed. He told me, he said, "Where is Hyrum?" And I don't think I've been interested in Hyrum because there's no straight shot to Hyrum from any interstate. And I said, "Well, yeah, it's even near me to Hyrum." I said, "'Cause it's a straight shot off my town." He said, "Well, I just didn't realize that." And he said, "Okay, I'll meet you out there." He said, "Met me out here for lunch. We ate at the Happy Hog." And then he looked around at downtown Hyrum and the city owns 12 acres down there and on those side railroad tracks. And I said, "See, I said, "This is the greatest place in the world because you're 30 minutes from downtown Atlanta, 30 minutes from the airport, and 30 minutes from New Bray Stadium." So I said, "Where else would people want to live more?" I said, "This would be a perfect place." And so he looked at it and he thought it was pretty good. And what I tried to tell him, you know, "Why couldn't we have retail stores on the bottom and living spaces at the top, you know, multi-use facility?" And he said he's impressed. He said he didn't realize what Hyrum was like. He left and I didn't hear from him. Two days later, he did call me though, and I was amazed because he said, "You know, some of them owns that five acres beside theirs and some of them's that 12 acres and that 10 acres." And he knew everybody only, he said, "'Cause if you do this, you need about 40 acres minimum." So he was interested. My only problem is I don't know that he's a big enough investor to really pull it off. So I'm moving on to some other investors and I'm going to talk because I would love to see downtown Hyrum eventually be like Woodside. And I think we have all the possibilities of doing that here. If you want to know a little history on Hyrum, and I love Hyrum, I do. I love Polton County. Got to know Polton County when I was going still at Jackson State. I used to go down 278 over to Jacksonville. I used to go to South Beach because I go to downtown Dallas. This was back in 1980 through 82. And also, they had a radio station that was calling it for WKRP. So the two TV shows were popular, the sound was Dallas and WKRP. So that kind of sparked my interest and I always thought, "Well, I just like this county." And you find out how county is named and it means even more to you. But I think that we do have potential here and I think we can if we understand what to do and how to go after it, and that's one thing that we are doing. So Sonnyland Industrial Park, we don't have a lot of sewer in industrial parks. And that's a terrible thing because we want to track businesses. We want to take the tax burden off the backs of the people. Well, if we do that, we need to have sewer to track those businesses. So as soon as I got in office, I had an opportunity to help Jamie Gilbert get a grant for Sonnyland. Most of you know Jamie left and kind of got dropped, but I tried to stay on top of it. I had Lori Ashman working on it. She did, trying to do the reservoir, trying to do that. Took a while, but we finally got it done. And as of the end of this month, Sonnyland will have sewer. Dallas Mill Works. Dallas Mill Works, hey, they come to me, I'm going to talk to them and they said, "Look, we probably have to leave Polton County because we have three safety tanks in our property, close to 100 employees. We'd love to expand in our number 25, 30 employees, but we can't because the county is not allowed to put another six tank on the property." They have to pump those safety tanks every quarter, all three of them, $1,500. A tank, I think it was, or it might have been total. But either way, it's still, you know, that's not a playful business to operate. That's not a friendly business environment. So this company is going to be great. They're excited. We meet with them this week or first next week to see if they get hooked up and they'll be ready to go. So we will keep them. There's a couple other businesses in the park too who are also very happy we're getting that taken care of. Then also, 911 Center, you know, that was a great deal. When I came in office, it was scheduled to be put at the airport, which would have been a good location for it, sort of. I didn't really feel comfortable with it. And I started researching and I found out that was actually not the number one site in the county. The number one site in the county is where it's located now. So through Todd and Tonys and everybody else's help, we were able to move it back to the original site. And in doing so, we also found out that when you build a 911 center, it has to have this concrete ductile, okay? So if you have cable or optics coming in this way, you have to have it coming in this way too. Because if it gets cut on this side, it can't be down, so you have to have this side. Our 911 center has three ways, okay? It has it through the air and it has it on the left and it has it on the right. So no matter what happens, our 911 center should never be down. And of course, in the course of doing that, we found out that we were going to save millions of dollars because you cannot, and Scott Brink elaborated on this, you cannot use 278 to go down to put the fiber optics in. And you'd have to do both sides of the highway because you have to have your ductile. And since the state, once you go down 278, that means we have to go all the way through the woods and back trails. And I started researching and we're talking about probably about $90,000 a mile. So we saved millions of dollars by actually moving the 911 center to where the first original spot was, which is the greatest place for it. It's open now and it's running. I was able to have a part in that too, so, you know, that's great. The reservoir, had a good time with the reservoir, you know? That's something that everybody in this county voted on and it passed over. So the reservoir is moving along. It's under budget. It's going to be, or have capability to service most of the county. A lot of people who live in Polton don't realize that all of our water does come from Cobb County. And if you're getting the water from Cobb County, that's okay. But I did meet Lynn Page right when I first got elected. I asked her, and Lynn's the present CEO, Cobb County Water. And I said, "Lynn, if you're in my position, what would you do?" And he said, "I would pursue the reservoir." And I said, "Well, I know there's a lot of people who don't want it. It passed over. But why would you do that?" And he said, "Well, I think it'd be crazy if you did." And I said, "Well, let me ask you a question. You're telling me that I should pursue this and you're going to lose me as a customer." And he said, "Well, I don't like that. I don't want to lose you as a customer." He said, "But you said, 'What would I do if I was in your shoes and I would pursue it?'" And I said, "Well, if we do pursue it, are you going to hope the records will come after us and all this?" And he said, "It was not his intentions." So hopefully it will not be his intentions. I also asked him, I said, "Well, I've always heard that there's a contract that says you have to sell us water." And he says, "We do have to sell water." I said, "Well, how much? What's the contract say?" He said, "Well, actually, there is no number." He said, "So if I sold you one gallon, I hundred the contract." So I said, "If it came down to water for Cobb County and water for Polton County, Cobb County is going to get first pick." And he said, "We'll never win." So I think the reservoir is very important. I mean, a lot of people understand that, but we need to understand that because without water, you forget about business. Two things we know, businesses, water in, water out, all right? And that's why the sewers are so important. That's why I'd like to see more sewers built. We have a movie studio, Todd had no part of building. I think that's not government's purpose to build a movie studio. We've got over $7 million in it now. They've had a contract. I don't know that that contract is going to be honored, I think, from what I understand. He hadn't got all the details yet, but that contract might be falling apart. If it does, I'm told by some very common people, don't worry, we'll get something done with it quickly. But I would have loved to have seen this county instead of putting, you know, $7 million in a movie studio or eight or nine million, I don't even know what it's up to now. You know, why wouldn't we not put that sewer infrastructure? Roads. This is the way I think. This is the way I would have voted if I'd been in office then, because I think the most important thing we can do, if we really care about the tax burden of the people, is to bring more business in. Now, this is a veteran community. It will probably always be a veteran community, but we need to optimize as many jobs in the county as we can and get the most for our buck so we can keep that as low as we can so we can help our taxpayers. That is one reason I did not vote when they bought this SunTrust building for the Water Department. I thought that was a prime piece of commercial land. I don't like the idea that it was being taken off the tax digest. I want to keep it on the tax digest. And I would at least like to say, let me do a little more research and find out if it would have been better off to maybe build it on a piece of land that the Audi of the home that wasn't on the tax digest. So that's what I'm looking at. I don't have anything else you want to talk about. Personally, we want to know about the airport. I don't know. We can't talk about that. We've got questions or we want to say something about the airport first.
Well, I have a few questions. You're going to be speaking on the airport issue there. We'll say, I worked in film and entertainment for three years.
Yes.
I worked on Walking Dead, Season Two, as a production assistant. I think it's really important to understand that an airport project that's up and running and functional, much like Peachtree City has an airport, they actually use that airport to fly people in instead of drop dead diva. So if you complete an airport and allow people to fly actors and talent and people in, it being that close to that film studio would actually allow... I'm not saying you have to necessarily go full pop-up with that airport, but I want to know what have the commissioners done to market that film studio to make money with it? And are you also offering it out to other developers? There are a lot of companies that could use that space. For instance, a lot of commercial, a lot of businesses would love to use a space like that for photography and other things like that. So I want to know, what have you personally or what have the commissioners done to market that studio?
One question, studio first. It's been heavily marketed, okay? We're told by a lot of people, you just set a studio up for commercials, you set up for movies. Ours is kind of in between. It's not really what you need for movies and it's not what you need for commercials. I talked to some people and they said to make it suitable for commercials, which was a very good avenue where we could do that, but here again, this is something that's the private industry should have done, not the county, okay? Taxpayer dollars should not have been spared for this, okay? But it would have cost us about $250,000 to make it where it would be just suitable for people coming in to do commercials. And we did talk about that. And at that time, we did get the contract from these folks who have it now. But I don't know if that contract's going to hold up or not. As far as the airport, okay, it is open. It is functional. It is running. People can fly in right now. We actually do have, I won't say his name, there's a CEO of a very large Fortune 500 company who flies in that airport all the time with his mother who lives in Polton County. Departes his plane out there, goes business with his mother, and then gets back and flies out.
Same as Peachtree City.
Same as Peachtree City, that's right. I'm all for a general aviation airport, okay? I want this thing to be like Charlie Brown, McColl, Peachtree City, Hardestwell. General Aviation Airport can do everything except for have planes like Delta come in and do the commercial flying. Now, let me tell you one reason why I'm against the commercial, okay? Because most people don't know this, and this is something we need to know if we're an informed citizen. We don't have a control tower. If we have to go commercial, we'll have to build a control tower. That control tower, minimum, is going to be $15 million.
Which we're building a $75 million jail, so we will talk about costs. But let's say that we were to do that, how much revenue would it offer?
Great question. That's where I'm going, okay? 15 million, okay, minimum. Probably go for 20 million. Not even to mention, the county is responsible for the TSA, so how many million is left?
No, how much revenue?
I understand that. I understand that. I'm getting there. So how much money are we going to make on that? Well, before I got in office, they gave the airport away. They gave it to the Polton County Airport Authority. So they actually control the airport. Us commissioners have no say so over there. So if you don't like what's going on there, I'm sorry, we can't do anything about it. If they want to give it back, I'll take it over and we'll start.
So is that aviation group not a part of the government of Polton County?
It's a son entity.
That's a part of the government.
Part of the government. We have no control over it. Read it. It says we can't take... All we can do is finance it and that's it, okay? That's it. Hands off. Let me finish my quick, sorry, okay? So how much revenue? Great question. We're already here for 20 million. And I said, "Yeah, 15, 20 million with a TSA in that, okay?" The contract we signed, and I didn't sign this contract, so don't get mad at me, oh, no, no.
The airport is what he said.
The airport authority signed it. It says that Propeller gets 97.5% of profit. The PCAA gets 2.5% of profit. Now, that's enough to tell me right there, I want to do business with these folks. That's not fair. Now, let's go one step further. So you're talking about how much money? So how much money is the PCAA going to make? It doesn't matter because the law says the 2.5% that the PCAA makes has to go back into the airport. Once we get to 139, Propeller will get anywhere from $1 to $2 million a year from the FAA. That money's marched very closely and it has to go back into the airport. So we got a company out of New Jersey or New York, wherever they are, that has 97% of our profit. And guess what the law says about their 97.5? They pocket?
Is it possible, instead of spending $76,000 on a plan to promote Polton growth to a company in Florida, we could have used someone in Polton? And we had our economic development plan. We spent over $70,000 to come up with that.
Definitely.
Why didn't we spend that money?
Let's go one question. I'm trying to roll over. I don't think I'm...
I'm just curious if your logic is...
Well, I want to know what you think about how much revenue are we going to get? You tell me because I just told you. So repeat back to me, how much revenue are we getting?
Zero.
Zero.
Well, that's kind of my question. So who is in charge of developing the area around the airport? Is that codes that need to be changed or has anybody expressed any interest in building a hotel there?
Is it private owned? Is it county owned?
You know, what?
Airport is pretty unsumo and that. We could actually do an industrial park there and it may be something we're going to talk about. I think Scott Payton will talk about that a little bit and it's probably something we may not be able to. It's something we're going to have to deal with pretty soon and is that going to be worthwhile to do that? If you look into the topography of the airport, it's not great because it's on top of a mountain. I know we're talking about doing one industrial park right beside the runway and doing a four car. Now, I'm for the one right beside the runway. I'm not really for the one that's four car because on the right side of that one, you can build. On the left side, it's in some places, an 80-foot drop-off. So how much money do we want to put in that? Who's going to build on an 80-foot drop-off?
Would we consider bringing in, I'm sorry, bringing in FedEx? Because a lot of our school drives, it pretty much maps out. We can't build much more.
Yes. I know in fact UPS was talked to and they were not interested. But it doesn't mean we can't get... We don't have to have UPS or FedEx. There's tons of companies out there. But what we got to resolve first is are we going to build a 139 general aviation?
We can't use, move the gray dirt out there right now.
Yeah, there is a lawsuit, okay, by six citizens. By six citizens, not by the county. And anything that happens is going to probably be stopped because of that. So if you really care about this county, in my opinion, the best thing to do is stop the 139, let's go with the general aviation. If you stop the 139, that lawsuit probably goes away. So how much money do you want to spend on the lawsuit? Okay, so we'll see. Yeah, and the city of Atlanta's now involved.
They're suing us.
Yeah. And the reason, you want to know why they're suing us? When they signed into the airport, they said, "Okay, the FAA picks out where it's going to be." They planted it right there. We had a county employee at the time who didn't get a survey and he just kind of added and said, "I think this is where the runway needs to be." So they go out there and start making the runway out there. And what happens is, we get on Atlanta's land.
Somebody went out there and just said, "I think we should go here."
Just eyeball it.
Well, you have to ask him. I don't know. He probably said he got a survey. But he got a survey.
We ended up on 163 acres of Atlanta's land.
About 40 of Atlanta's land. So they really went to Atlanta and said, "Look, Atlanta, we need your help." And this is one thing that kind of irritates me because they went to Atlanta and said, "We really need your help." And Atlanta listened to them and did a lot of negotiations. Atlanta said, "You know what, Polton County? We will help you because we see you got, you're in bind out there. What we're going to do is say 163 acres, get you out of your bind, but we just want one promise. And that promise is that you'll never use that airport to compete with us." And that was, everybody agreed. It's in writing, it's on videotape, but when Atlanta sold the land and did the deed, as big as it are and struggles they are, they forgot to put the deed restriction on land. So now you got people come on and say, "You know what? Screw it, man." Well, I don't feel that way.
I'm just wondering, I have a lot of friends in the graduate of South Paul in high school. I know a lot of friends that barely make ends meet in Rockmart, barely make ends meet in Hyrum. My question next would be, get off the airport unless you want to go.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to ask you a question.
Well, I've been educated on a few things, but my question would be, you talked about building in Polton County. County Commissioner meeting I was in, it was pretty evident that you guys, I don't know if you have a moratorium or if you have a law or how you're doing it, but essentially we are not allowed to put in prefab metal construction here in Polton County. Is that, is that still correct? County Commissioner meeting, which one it was?
As far as I know, you do that.
But, no, there are actually several developers.
You're talking on Business Six.
Yeah, this is the court.
Okay. Yeah, because there was some discussion about, and there's a lot of areas of Polton County that developers, there were several developers that spoke at that meeting stating that you could not build prefab metal construction in Polton, which is a big problem because...
You're talking on Business Six.
And then 278.
278.
That's court.
Yeah, that's that court. I would be going to the top by two. And I think it was done for a reason, which I won't get into, but I think it was done for a reason. But yeah, I've even had conversations with Catherine voter. I'd like to change.
Is there a reason that we don't allow that kind of construction? Is that, that's pretty standard construction?
You'd have to ask the people before we vote for that.
Okay.
That's finding an zoning commission. That's finding a zoning commission.
They'd just like to know why.
It has to be approved by a board of commissioners.
Yeah, we could control, I'm pretty sure, Todd, we could control that. We could bring that up. I might bring that to the table.
In fact, a last question, I brought it up at Mr. Davis's town hall several months back. I'm very excited about the reservoir. I think it's important. I've been at the state Capitol when they were discussing continuation of Polton County purchasing water from Cobb. So I think it's great that we are looking at having an independent water reservoir for Polton County. My concern is environmentally, there are two pipelines go essentially over the water there. I brought up, now, Mr. Davis is to understand, you know, are there plans in place? I wonder if there's an oil pipeline. I would hate to see our new reservoir, heaven forbid, be tainted by a leak or any kind of corrosion from that. Do we have in place, or has there been any further discussion after that town hall as to a plan of action in case something happens?
Great question. And I don't want to ask it, but I think what I do know is those pipelines are not that close to the actual reservoir. And since the water pipe that you're talking about is an intake, that can always be shut off. So even if it leaked into that pipe system, it could be shut down so it couldn't reach the reservoir.
I'll have to re-look at the maps because I think one of them pretty much almost goes over the water. So I'd have to look at the maps myself again.
Over the actual reservoir?
Believe so. What's been sent to me. So I just want to know that, you know, we have that, it's a spoke ground pipeline that goes over the water. But I just want to make sure that we have thought of all of that.
If it does, we need to address that. But I can imagine a whole lot. And I'll definitely take into that. If you manage stuff, I'll get back with you, okay?
Absolutely.
All right.
I just wanted to make sure he does understand that we, you know, we have ships and everything, can't fly into the airport as it is now. And they can hold up for passengers and something like that. And also, we don't have this system in the city of Atlanta's going, but you mentioned And also, we don't have this system in the city of Atlanta's going, but you mentioned FedEx, and that was one of the things that they talked about in their agreement to Polton. If we give you the land, you can never have FedEx U P S. People like that hubs out there at the airport.
And we signed that, and that's in the agreement, or they left that out?
Well, it is.
They left all of that in the papers, so.
It just bothers me as someone who is a young person here in Polton County, that I have friends who, if there were more traffic coming through that airport, it was successful, there would be hotels, there would be more restaurants, there would be an entire new area of development that would provide those jobs. Seventy-two percent of our county leaves the county every day for work. And restricting on building, I don't know if we have restrictions on multi-story building, but I don't know why we don't have apartment buildings here, I don't know why we don't have more infrastructure. We talk about wanting it, and we definitely have to zone for it, but it would actually increase our property values, having more things in Polton. The reason young people leave Polton, there is nothing here for us, there is no future of how we feel.
There are a lot of young people who live in the county, I've met a lot of people who've been off time, they love our county because of the green space. And no county has more green space than Polton County in the state of Georgia. Our green space is phenomenal. We need to take advantage of our green space. We got the walking trail. We've talked about making a walking trail from Silver Comet over to the waterfall. We have a waterfall that's beautiful in this county, and waterfalls attract people. So if people do move here, okay, and lots of times they move here, they know they're gonna be driving. When I first moved here, I drove to Swan every day. And I knew that when I moved here.
That's an awful drive.
It was one, one and a half hours over there every day, and three hours home every day. You could figure it out. I guess it was one uphill on the way home.
When I first moved here, I drove to Atlanta every day, then I started my own business, and now I have my business in Polton County. So, you know, entrepreneurs can, all kinds of opportunities.
I have two businesses. Yes, please.
Gordon, when the Chamber of Commerce did their study on how many jobs a commercial airport would be getting, how many did they study?
The, the...
Full-time equivalent.
Yeah, full-time equivalent, right.
There's the next to catch.
The first year. And by year three, it was a hundred and fourteen, and that's countywide. So if McDonald's has to add a couple extra people, that was included.
And full-time equivalent means part-time. There is no, and I said that's a little catch that you got, got to watch when they start talking F T E is what they use. Those are not full-time jobs, you know, and they're talking, you know, four flights a week. With TSA, how many hours are we talking a week?
Are we considering construction of business parks then, and infrastructure that's larger than some of our offices? Like, I've rented the offices here in Hyrum, the White Pollens, it's a great space, it's a beautiful space. But as far as, I'm in internet business. Internet capabilities wasn't the best in Polton. I'm actually looking at moving, unfortunately, possibly out of the county because of the infrastructure in other areas. Business parks, not so much warehousing, but actual places for people to set up shop as a small business, multi-use office, I don't see a lot of that. Even rental space in Polton to host events is very difficult.
It is, not a lot of, you know, businesses today are a lot of looking for buildings that are already being rent, and we don't have that. That's something we need to focus on.
Focus on.
Mine, I'm gonna focus still on the sewer, because without the sewer, I would carry a million billions a year out, and still got a problem, okay? So I'm pushing sewer. I would love to have that nine million dollars of movie studio just to do sewer in this county. I am constantly working on new ways to do sewer. There's some things going on that I can't tell you about, okay? There's a couple huge corporations looking to come here. If they do, it will give us an opportunity to increase our sewer, and I'm hoping it works out. Nothing happens overnight. Let me give you an example, because you like McCollum Airport, right? Well, you wouldn't mind if this airport was like a gun, because I would. I'll say it right now, I wish it was, okay? McCollum opened back in the forties, I think it was, you know when they turned it first profit? Twenty fifteen. First profit. But look what they did around it, okay? So airports are a tool, and that's what we need to realize, it is a tool, and we need to use that tool the best of our abilities. But I, yeah, so we're gonna talk about that, we're gonna have to make a decision on an industrial park around it, and like I said, I've got a problem with one side, okay? So that's why I was there for her first time. I just wanna, I wanna get behind you real quick.
Being on time, I just said, go ahead. I wanna circle back, did you say that they built an industrial park without sewers?
Yes.
Who did that? I'd like to know who did that. I don't understand that. How do you build an industrial park without sewers? That's like building a house with no doors.
Hyrum has no sewer, Hyrum built a park that has no sewer. Sundown had no sewer when it was built.
That's why they...
Enroe had sewers, I'm telling you.
I mean, that's...
Enroe had sewer.
It doesn't make any sense.
I think, I think the one in Dallas has sewers, I believe. However, that wall is so rocky, it's gonna be hard to track people there.
I actually have two questions, if you don't mind me answering.
No, you got to answer them.
You spoke about green space, and I'll tell you, I moved here sixteen years ago, and part of the reason I moved here is because at the time, Polton County had a three-quarter acre on development for residential houses. It's down to a half acre now. But the main reason was, is that the contractors that were building homes out here were clear-cutting. The homes that we looked at had a little bit of woods and some mature trees on the property, and that was one of the biggest reasons besides the property. So I'm a little disappointed that the park that's going out on Mulberry Rock Road was clear-cut. I mean, completely. It is nothing but clay dirt out there. Next to the elementary school, Ridge Road isn't called Mulberry Rock when you cross number sixty-one, the new park.
There's no park in Silver Creek.
Park, R, K. Yeah, the very definition of a park is a wooded area, right? And it's just clear-cut, there's not a tree left there. And I understand that there's a liability for trees in a park, and it's hard to build, but you're not really building on a park, you're just creating green space. So when you say green space in Polton, I'm a little confused. When I go by there, and there's not a tree left, and just these three little pavilions. I mean, are we gonna put a metal swing set out there in the sun, or?
They wanted an open field for people to, you know, get out and play and run dogs.
I know, but no shade at all. I mean, they're kind of simple trees.
There will be shade out there.
In like twenty years? Let's not do that ever again. Let's not do that ever.
There are, you'd like to make that sound.
Yes, I would.
There are plenty of trees out there, it is not clear-cut. There are plenty of trees out there on that property. When you drive by, you haven't had the opportunity to drive in there, which you probably haven't because it's under construction.
I watched the video.
There are, there are trees everywhere there. There are, there are playing fields that are cut, that are gonna be playing fields for the future, there's fields out front, there's walking trails, but there's trees everywhere. A lot of the trees are even dividing into two and three different field areas.
I saw that on video.
Okay? So there's, there are plenty of trees.
So is that, are you gonna be parking lots there, or what?
No, there's gonna be playing fields, it's gonna be a lot, that park's gonna be a whole lot like the White Oak Park.
Solid football type.
Where you got places that you can just go out there. We're not gonna have organized sports at this point, there may be something there in twenty years. There's future plans for it, but right now, walking trails, places to have picnic, fly kites, there's gonna be quite a few pavilions.
I will reserve my judgment for when it's finished, but I just look at the Google images, and I see this thickly wooded area, and then I look at your video about it with the drone, I'm guessing, and I just go...
I could say that, when you first look, when you first look at, especially from the road there, that's what you're gonna think, but it's, I think people are gonna find out, that's probably gonna end up being the premier park you'll have, I mean, it's absolutely...
That timber was used to pay for that park? Where did that money go for that timber?
God, how many acres are it? It's like sixty-five or something.
Hundred and...
Yes, so we'll see, maybe.
Sixty-something, yeah.
I have the video, you're saying the entire park, not just the...
Contractor work ethic is...
I was just informed, Mr. Newborn? I can't hear your first name.
Lucas Newborn.
Lucas, that's right. I was just informed that if that was done, if it worked in front of the contracts, it would have actually reduced the price of the contractors, and we were took the wood problem.
Just curious where that money was.
And I know you got a question, you got a question, real quick, also, I had a meeting yesterday, it's strange you brought that up, because this is my understanding, and I'll go back and ask, that this county has never, ever had a three-quarter acres that it had ever been built on.
Sixteen years ago, I'm pretty sure, it was, it was more than an hour.
Because it was a lot of builders running the county, and they kept it as small and tight as they could.
I've done my research also, but every...
And I'll go make a check.
Every house in the neighborhood I live in is three quarters acre.
Because, you know, I'm talking, I don't say this, I'm here this day, and I'm talking about something.
She's dropped, it was three-fourths of an acre. Yeah, when Jerry and all those are in there, they had three-fourths, because they were getting complaints for too many houses. And they did go three-fourths of an acre, I just remember.
It's not...
No, no, now it's a half. Or point four seven, I think, technically. Thank you, ma'am.
Actually, this is a sliding scale based on the useful set. So I'm working, I am working.
She can figure it out, she's pretty fortunate.
Okay, Teresa, you got a question?
My question is, when we had the comprehensive, or the county had the comprehensive plan done, and the gentleman that was at the engineering firm spoke at the chamber, and he said that it appears that the grub is going to be in the southeast corner of the county. Are y'all at this time discussing, trying to get sewer and everything down here, because it's gonna subplace to I-20?
The reason he said that, he did say that, the reason he said that is because, kind of a flat place, and it's, I don't know if it's a flat land, other than I don't know if it's about. So that's one reason he said that. Yes, I think we have a great technology developer, Robert Reynolds, in my opinion, his hands have been tied the whole time he's here. We've gone to a lot of group organizations, restructuring. You have three, three entities that were kind of trying to take economic development and run with it, the chamber, the IBA, and the EDO, which is that economic development organization. And it kind of got where they were working against each other, and businesses coming to the county, didn't know what happened. But we are restructuring that, hopefully it's gonna be very soon. That's what we're taking there, we'll have it down. The new president of the chamber, she's fantastic, she understands what the chamber's role is. The chamber's role really is to keep businesses here, to hold them, to core them, to make it so they're always happy, okay? They won't expand, helping that. But it's really not a chamber's place to go out and attract a business. We've got an EDO and IBA now that's probably going to merge together, and it's probably gonna work out, hopefully, really well, and I hope it does, but I'll follow really closely. Yes, I work with Robert Reynolds, we are talking about, over here, some land, and the possibility that a company comes in, we also have a group of investors he's talking to, I won't say where, I said, why should I do that? They're looking at, doing an industrial park, a private investment firm is interested in doing an industrial park, must have sewer, but they wanna do some turnkey buildings. And see, that'll be the thing, do if we get private industry doing that, and that really helps us out all around. Graystone's coming. Okay, they've announced that they're moving all the facilities to re-roam in ninety-two.
Wow.
That will be a huge deal. That will have to be sewer, and that will help us too, because we will have to do some kind of joint partnership to sewer them to the county line. And once that line's put in, that's gonna open up a lot too.
They already have a sub-charm up there.
They already have a sub-charm, they have whole cameras, walking trails and lighting and everything. How would I say, Kathy, do you get to answer your question?
Well, I just wondered to elaborate why we can't do the building at the airport yet, because that environmental assessment is still not going. That's all I wanted to say.
There's not much else.
No, until, until that environmental assessment is complete, nobody...
And I agree, I think that if we have walkings, I would love to see a lot, I would love to see us utilizing that green space, because when you look out north, south, east and west of the Sundown restaurant, you see lights everywhere, all the way up to Conyers, can't really see over Six Flags Hill, but it's just, it's green space. I've talked with Michael Bradley at length about that. You mentioned economic development, and having spoken at the economic development when we were coming up with a tenure plan that you guys wanted to submit that was full of errors and that was produced in Florida, that was horrendous.
I agree.
I can't believe we spent money on that, but we have an economic development team, is that correct? There's a nonprofit group that we paid to come up with.
No, we have an economic development person, a staff at the IBA now.
Because that website, when I last looked a few months ago, hadn't been updated since 2014, and I thought we were paying them about twenty-five hundred or three thousand dollars a year to maintain the website, and their board of directors hadn't been updated since 2014. That's troubling to me, we talk about being...
I suppose restructuring is still good.
Is there a reason it's taken this long? Because we, I'm talking 2014, when was your term started?
You only get listed for twenty...
Twenty, I mean, I'd like us to be decent, there's families here, but...
You know, you've got power structures. And some people don't like to give up power, and sometimes it's not as easy as going there and saying, "You have no power." This is trouble.
What powers are we talking about? We're talking about powerful families again?
You gotta remember individual boards we don't control. So there's members on that board that think differently than I do.
The planning and zoning are speaking up.
No, I'm planning and zoning.
Which board?
Say, the IBA.
Okay.
The PCA, which is the Polton County Airport Authority. We don't control those boards, legally we can't control those boards. You can't go to them and tell them what to do, because that would be illegal, okay?
We want to check some balances, so I can understand that.
Yes, right. But if they're diametrically opposed to what I'm thinking, then you're in.
What are you thinking?
Okay? And you got to give and take, you got to fight, you got a arsenal.
Who was, who was paying three thousand, who was paying three thousand dollars a month to update a website that wasn't updated?
That would be the EDO.
Okay.
That would pay them, do their own. And it was, you're right, and there were other websites the way it is, but...
Have they fixed it?
There's so many internal problems, yes, it's all gonna get fixed, okay? I wish I could say it's gonna fix tomorrow, it's not. It's taking from January of this year till August to get them to come agreements on how they can merge.
Okay.
Okay? So you got a board here, the EDO board, you got an IBA board, and someone's giving up power. Okay, and I wish I could say, it's not about the power, but it is.
I'd say we should work together for the betterment of Polton, I don't know if you agree.
You should, you should. Well, what if they think this is not best, and they think this is, then you got a problem, don't you? So it's not, you know, hey, Republican, Democrat, go ahead.
I don't see Republican and Democrat, I see Americans, I see people that are tired of the county because it's in gridlock. I don't care if you're a Tea Party Republican or Republican, I'm more a resident or a Democrat. What I care about is, what are we doing for my generation in this county, and the generation that came before me? My grandmother lives at home with us, because there's a way to have her in an assisted living home, there are a lot of issues that we have.
That's not a common issue.
It's not, it's not, but...
There's competition, more homes.
I think if we have more infrastructure here...
Then that's private industry.
Oh, we want, we want private industry, we want corporate industry, we want industry in Polton, so I'm just curious, so we talk about economic development, and I just don't see it.
Or doesn't happen over time? I mean, you know, I didn't trust nothing a lot of time in economic development, a lot of time, a lot of time.
And just like the airport, if you look at the original plan, it does have industrial grounds.
It does. And I tell you, I met him, he was the president. You know? Don't, no, I met him when I first got elected, and he sat me down and showed me a power park presentation, and I stopped him on one certain page, and I've got the power park presentation, I showed you that page, because I made sure I kept it. I said, "Where at? I like what I see." I said, "I see all these businesses around the airport," I said, "I'm on board with that." And there's a hotel down at the front. I said, "I think all this can happen, I'm not sure about the hotel, I think it's too far out, I don't think it'll ever be there." But he said, "Oh, it'll be," and I said, "Well, you know, hopefully I'm wrong, and you're right." I said, "But I got a question for you." I said, "I don't see a commercial terminal on your draw." It was an aerial view that he had filling everything, and I said, "Where's the commercial terminal?" And he said, "Well, it's not about the commercial terminal, it's just about the business." And so I kept questioning, I said, "Well, I don't understand, we're on the same page now, you gotta do is drop the one thirty-nine, and let's keep moving on this." And he refuses to drop one thirty-nine. And I stayed on him, and stayed on him, and stayed on him, and finally, you know, I looked up and said, "It's about the million dollars, we give a million dollars if we get the one thirty-nine."
Did you say there was a DOT guy here tonight?
I don't know, you hear it.
No, no, this is not bad. I know, we briefly talked about them around about, and I would like to discuss that. Thank you for putting speed limit signs on ninety-two. There has not been speed limit signs, I don't know if they're responsible for that or not, but there has not been a speed limit signs from Maroni Mill to Morningside Drive almost the entire time I've lived in this county, and just recently, speed limit signs have gone up. There's only about four of them, but they're still up.
Scott, can you step up and take a bow? Take a bow, Scott.
I have complained and complained about that, and never got any reply, and finally four signs were put up.
Take a bow, take a bow.
Well, I can't take credit from the state for putting stop signs. Now, we do get requests, and...
They said it was on your guys', because I called them several times, they said, "Call your county."
They do call us, and then we forward it to the state, and then they follow.
The state controls state highways, and you have no say.
Yeah, that's why I went to them first, and then they threw it back on the county, and I said, "But that's a state highway." So we did this for like five years, yeah.
A lot of times there are things the state can't do very quickly, and they say, "Go to your local government, see if they can do it quicker." And sometimes we're able to. A lot of times we just follow up.
One of them did, and I'm just glad to see them, it's only four of them, but they're there.
You know, they're pretty responsive, and you can call our office, and we can find the right person, sometimes it's just finding the right person. Polton County, we coordinate all state routes, we know some of the state routes, we do things like take care of traffic signals. We maintain most of signals in the county, and about, I think, half the states have most.
Do you know the state law regarding speed limit signs? Because most states I've ever lived in, if it's a road that crosses a highway, there's a requirement to have the speed limit, so that when somebody turns onto a road, the posted speed limit sign is there. Is that not a law here in Georgia?
On, on fairly main roads, when you turn on, yes, there is supposed to be a speed limit sign, that's their policy.
Highway ninety-two would be considered a main road.
So, yeah, Ridge Road, something like that, typically that's what they put, when you turn off a major road onto a state route. But not every single side.
Kind of a comment, was Ridge Road one of the roads that you've used? You'd spoken at a commission meeting about a new form of repave, where we actually scrape most of that pavement out and recycle it and put it down as a new asphalt? Was, was Ridge Road one of those projects?
It was not. Harmony Road was a road we just paved recently. We did mostly roads on the west side of the county in post-two and post-four, lower travel roads. We don't have a lot of experience with the recycling method, so we're doing it on lesser we're doing it on lesser travel roads to start with.
Are we, does that go, I, I think it's, I just wanna say, I think it's great, I think it's great that we're recycling, and especially, I believe you said it was also saving us money.
Yeah, there's definitely some savings there, um, you are paying a contractor dividend, there's not a lot of contractors in that business yet, so, I think there could be more savings when more people are moving to the Georgia area that do that.
I think, I think it's great, I don't know if you, so gentleman, I forget which country he's from, he's from North, North Europe, and he's gone to Canada and some other countries, it's actually utilizing recycled tires, and their roads are actually have recycled rubber in them, so they actually last a lot longer than conventional roads. Have you guys looked at, at some near advanced things?
You know, and asphalt is, is very easily recycled, most of the state paving is done with recycled mix, they may not recycle it immediately and put it on the same road, what they do is they mill it up, take it back to the plant, they work it into the new mix, and it actually makes better asphalt than, um, fresh stone and oil, or virgin mix or color.
Awesome, and last, oh, sorry.
Okay.
I live over by Skoggins Road, and there's, there's some stuff going on around there, I'm just curious, I just want to know, because I live in a very small community, and, um, I'm of the mind that government doesn't do anything well, they waste money, they're very wasteful, tax dollars, my tax dollars, I just got a tax increase, and I came home earlier this week, or the end of last week, I can't remember which, and there is a sign in my, my community of nine houses, and it's behind a tree, which you can't even see, and it says, road construction. And I see in my neighborhood, a bunch of little flags where they mark for the cable and the, and the gas and the telephone lines and stuff like that, and I see it on Skoggins, and I see in a lot of communities there, and someone told me that they're getting ready to buy in Skoggins or something like that.
Yeah, that, that's a bad rumor, we've been chasing those phone calls also, um, the utility markets are out there, are marking, because they are putting signposts in the ground, that is a state project. They're getting ready to research the Skoggins and Hiren Sudi Road from Highway one-twenty all the way to ninety-two.
They're just gonna research it?
It's, they're just researching projects.
So why have I spent tax dollars to put a sign in my neighborhood when it's not even on Skoggins Road? It's, I think, I mean, I've got a fifteen mile an hour speed limit in my, in my community, and when I get to the stop sign at the end of my community, I can see that there's road destruction on Skoggins.
Right, well, that's pretty logical, but even if you're a dead end road, they're required to put signs on all side roads and colored streets. So you are entering, or you're reminded that you're entering the work zone, it's for the worker's safety, it is a state standard, it's in, in their contract for traffic control. They put up the, uh, series of signs, if you're on a major road, you'll have the fifteen-hundred thousand, five hundred, but on the side roads, they only put up the one sign. That's, that's what they're required to do for safety.
Well, they could put it somewhere where you can see it, it's kind of behind a tree.
Well, that, that, if you tell me what road it is, I'll be glad to report that.
Uh, it's a hard deal, man.
Okay, I know what that is. And then also, to let you know, the state is giving a new product on that road that you're not gonna be able to agree with, and I'd be curious about, they're doing chip seal, it's really a tar and gravel product, they're gonna put down a, a asphalt cement, and then they're gonna cover it with stone, put another layer of asphalt, then cover it with stone again, and it's kind of old school, uh, but what it is, is you know that road is pretty old, there's a lot of crack sealing they've done in Skoggins, and, uh, over time, it's a lot of shrinkage and thermal cracking and some load cracking that they're trying to address, so they're gonna do a load of two layers of stone on the road, it kind of bridges that, and they're gonna leave it there for a few years, and then they'll come back and put regular hobbits on top of that.
That would come into my community, because my road's about thirty years old, and that would've been paved and scathed and done, so...
Now, that's my problem, if you want me to look at that, I guess. So I've got that under.
It's just a little side into, I don't think it's a four mile long.
Can I understand that? I'll look at it for you, thank you.
Last question, this is for, for DOT, um, very excited about the roundabout, and, I don't know if this is the correct, I don't know if I'm about to work that name on yet, it's still waiting here, but, just kidding, just kidding, just kidding. Ridge, do we have an estimate, because I think that county committee, county commissioner meeting last year, when I first heard about it, as someone went to South Paulding and deals with that traffic every day on Ridge Road, um, do we have an estimated idea on the time for that roundabout to start?
Uh, no, we're, we're heavily into the design, but I don't think we've started any of the right away acquisition, that could take several months. I probably should have, keep prepared to give you a schedule, because I thought about it on the way over, I didn't know it was gonna come until the last minute.
We'll be glad to do it.
Be glad to report back to you, um, give me, or take one of my cards, and I'll be glad to give you an email, give you a better estimate.
I understand there's a couple others being planned, October and, uh, October and that one, or, sorry?
I mean, pretty much, we're, we're trying to avoid signal works. Our neighbors to the west of us have about a thousand traffic lights, I mean, to the east of us, have a thousand, uh, we have about seventy, and we want to stay under a hundred as long as we can. Generally, um, the median travel roads, a roundabout's gonna work better day to day. Uh, the traffic lights break down, our, one of our number one callouts is signal malfunction in the middle of the night and on the weekends, so we're trying to minimize that.
I think it's great we don't use as much electricity, we don't have the, the, the maintenance of, of all that, and also, I remember from that, it's a huge percentage of accidents that it's decreased because you enter that roundabout slowly to get into.
It's very tragic, it's great that we're having a roundabout. You're not gonna have the head-ons ever when the roundabout interior.
Hopefully not.
And then, you don't have to keep on type freshes, they're safer when you do have it.
Scott, where are you at? Come on, you say, I forgot.
No, I'm sorry, don't tell me, don't tell me. We have a couple other roundabouts, and, and we have another intersection project we're working on, we're working with Douglas County at Baker's Bridge at Sweetwater, that's a multi-county project, so it's taken a long time.
Douglas was...
The intersection's actually in Douglas County.
A turn here, I believe.
Two-thirds of the intersection is in Douglas, and we have a very good design we're moving forward, in fact, we're meeting with Douglas County this week for next steps, they've already started contacting property owners, um, but that is coming, it's, it's a full intersection with left turn lanes at each approach, so the traffic light doesn't bog down with one person waiting at the turn left. And we've looked at a lot of other options, Vernon's been on my case, and trying to prove what, what will and what won't work, and we're convinced that we really need to do the full intersection rebuild, there's not really a, a good quick fix there at this point, but Douglas does have some money now to work with, and they've offered to partner with us, and we're working good on that to move up, but I don't have a schedule yet for you. Um, let me mention, uh, also, we are looking at a concept for another roundabout at Center at Baker's Bridge. We haven't, we haven't spent any new design money on, we have hired a firm to complete the design, we're doing that in-house right now, we're exploring the concept, we're gonna look at the benefits, and then we'll probably meet at the neighborhoods and, and explain the project before we carry that into further.
That's definitely the roundabout also.
Roundabouts are, are gonna be a better tool, and acceptance from the public is gonna get better, as you see more and more of them, our, our, more urban counties are using them everywhere, they work great, a lot of, there's a lot of skepticism about these roundabouts when, if they're planned and all that, but after they get used to them, they're like, this is the best thing.
Miss Posters did a special, I mean, they've, they've...
We've been working in Europe for three hundred years, I guess.
Yeah, they're great.
And I'm just curious, personally, why did we make sixty-one lower? That's just for me personally, because I live out that way, when we did sixty-one and Evo Road, we took that, that road down a lot, I'm just, personally just curious why we...
Well, that was a traffic signal, and so when you have a fifty-five mile an hour road meeting a thirty-five or forty-five at Evo, they have to design those crests and the visibility as if it was a green light, so if somebody pulls up and turns right, they've gotta see, you know, six, seven hundred feet, and so they're bringing that crest down to make sure they have a visibility.
I, I assume, I just...
Yeah, so that was a state project, and we, we participated with signal maintenance and the signal energy.
That was interesting, you go then. Uh, you said we had seventy traffic lights in the county, um, have they all been put on the flashing yellow, turn signals, something like that?
No, probably, uh, less than half of them.
I just love those things.
We're doing them a little bit. Are you kidding me, or is it... No, I'm serious. It, it can catch you off guard, because you actually can get a red light in the right lane and a flashing yellow in the center, and it's a little bit, takes some getting used to, to say, okay, I'm gonna take a move. We're trying to do that with grant funding, the state's been giving us some grants to do a little bit of the time, and they'll stretch it out to make it, but all new signals will be assigned without?
I've been to Cocke, and I haven't seen any over there.
There's a lot of few on Dallas Highway, uh, that's the first place they started using them, I think, that I'm aware of, I'm sure they've done some on the east side. Okay, so, just...
I've seen people not understand those, maybe a short video about what that means. On Ridge Road, I've seen people think that that's green, and they head out to make the left, and of course, the other traffic's coming, and you're like, what about flashing yellow, didn't you understand? I think they're great also, but apparently some people don't quite understand.
My head keeps saying, beat the light.
Yeah.
Let's get the outside.
Right, either way, it's caution though, because you don't have to ride around yellow, you got, you got my...
I know that, I'm worried about the people that don't.
It's an acceptance thing, I also like the roundabouts, it's gonna take a while, they're good for all of the country, and that's our people, we'll see them pretty much in any state you got.
What, you wanna say something?
Thank you.
What was the question?
Last, you know, if you can go, go, proceed when, proceed when safe.
Thank you.
Are you ready to wrap up?
I'm ready to wrap it up.
I would like to just say that in honor of Vernon's sixtieth birthday yesterday, we're going to be having cake, so if you'd like to stay and join in with us, please do.
Yeah, just let me break that air, my fortieth birthday?
My bad, my bad.
Say forty, so say forty.
If I could ask one last thing, but this, and this is, this is from, I've had a lot of young people ask me, because they've seen your video, fellow people from South Paulding graduate. You put out a video, we discussed this at your last, one of your county commission meetings.
That's right.
And, and I understand and I agree with you, we need to worry about children being in those trade schools, we need to up our trade school presence in the county, but at the same time, the way that video is presented makes you come up very anti-high education. And I had discussed that with you.
I was worried about that, I, I did a survey and asked a ton of people, and nobody came back, you know. Now, I'm very, I'm very passionate about this, I'm not, you're probably right, because I'm very passionate about that, I think the state messed up when they said, I'm doing away with all the textbooks, everybody got to college, I think it was a county mistake. Hey, on the record, I think college is great, I believe in higher education, but it's not